Item four, recognition presentations for A is the recognition of the Perry Fire Department. If I could get the town chief, Rowell, to come forward, please. We all know what a good job all of our employees do, but I wanted to pay special recognition to the Perry Fire Department. And this is from Charleston County, Georgia, the Board of Commissioners, and it's entitled, "The West Mem's Fire, Dear Perry Fire Department." On behalf of the Charleston County Board of Commissioners, Fire Department, E of A, and our community, we would like to formally thank you for supporting us in the efforts to contain into the West Mem's Fire by performing several structural protections for our citizens. We would not have been able to defend the livelihood of our citizens without you or your equipment. Your firefighters showed a great amount of courage and commitment in supporting the Charleston County, and we are forever grateful. It is a great pleasure that we are able to have such great relations with our neighboring cities and counties. With the personnel and equipment you so graciously afforded to us, we were able to ensure that no citizen lost their home during the fire. Again, we thank you for your quick response and all that you and your community have done to support us. We are greatly appreciative. If you ever need anything in the future, please reach out to us. God bless you all. Sincerely, the Charleston County Board of Commissioners. A nice letter, and they sent a certificate of commendation to the Perry Fire Department. And I wanted to present it to that town chief, Rowell, who represents Perry Fire and Emergency Services with the City of Perry. Congratulations. Thank you for your outreach through your department, not only locally, but what you've continued to do to service our region and this state. Congratulations. Thank you. We have another recognition. This is a proclamation for a gentleman who might have known for quite some time since I have been in the City of Perry. It's with distinct honor and privilege and pleasure that I have to recognize a man I truly love, and I already miss so much. Mr. Martin Bealn served his nation, he served his city, and he served his community with distinction, with honor, with character, and with integrity for many, many years. He truly has left his mark on the City of Perry, and more importantly, on the hearts and minds of those who knew him and knew him well. We have his beautiful bride, Ms. Jackie Bealn, with us. Would you please join me? His son, Jimmy Bealn, and his wife, Pamela. Y'all come up. And Mr. Martin's grandson, Mr. James Bealn, who's been a partner of mine with my son since they were born, literally. There are stories about this Jimmy and I poached since they were knee-high. We won't get there right now. There are also some members of the current Perry Planning Commission. I know we've got Mr. Jacob Poole, the chairman. Will y'all please stand and introduce yourselves? Mr. Bealn was chairman of this Perry Planning Commission for quite some time, and I'll talk about that a little bit more now. Please tell us who you are.
I'm Jacob Poole. I'm the chairman of the Perry Planning Commission.
I'm Lawrence Cady.
Lawrence Parsons, and vice chairman of the Perry Planning Commission.
Jim Mazzola.
Thank y'all very much. I appreciate y'all's attendance. In the City of Perry, a proclamation honoring James Martin Bealn Senior. Whereas, James Martin Bealn Senior was born on June 1935 in Montezuma, Georgia, and grew up in Perry. And whereas, Martin attended Perry High School and was a member of the 1953 State Class D Championship Basketball Team, and was a member of the track and baseball teams. Whereas, Martin proudly served our country in the United States Navy from 1955 to 1959 as an air crewman and made 77,777 arrested landings aboard the aircraft carrier USS Foxer. And whereas, Martin retired from Robbins Air Force Base in 1995 after 36 years of service, 31 of which were in base contracting, and was awarded the AFLC Outstanding Base Contracting Civilian Award in 1983. And whereas, Martin was an active member, active volunteer in the community while supporting his son, Jimmy. He umpired Perry Junior League for more than 15 years, and he operated the basketball scoreboard at Westfield Schools. It got to the point where nobody knew it would work without him doing the controls. He moved to the bleachers to cheer on his beloved grandson, James, in 2010. And whereas, Martin served the community as a firecracker at the Georgia National Playground welcoming visitors to the City of Perry. And whereas, Martin and his wife, Jackie, of 59 years, were active members of the Perry United Methodist Church, where he was president of a Sunday School class, member of the choirs, plural, and maintained at the music library. And whereas, Martin served with great distinction on the Perry Planning Commission for 36 years, from January 1980 until December 2016. And whereas, Martin served as chairman of the Planning Commission for 25 years. And whereas, Martin played an invaluable and integral role in the orderly growth and development of the City of Perry. And whereas, Martin's foresight and input were vital to ensuring Perry remains a vibrant hometown with an outstanding quality of life. Now therefore, we proclaim that the City of Perry Mayor, City Council, city staff, and the citizens of Perry wish to recognize and acknowledge Mr. James Martin Bealn Senior for his dedication and his service to the Perry community. Congratulations. Thank you for sharing him with us for all of those years. He is already missed, but he will never be forgotten. Thank you, Solomon. Ms. Jackie, would you like to say anything?
Well, I'll just say he truly, truly had a lot of respect and good thanks to this organization that he chaired. And he was kind of strict, wasn't he?
Yes.
But it was all in the best interest of the city. He wanted it to be beautiful, be nice, and be clean. And, uh, but he loved his job, and that's all I know.
That's fantastic. Jim? Um, just to reiterate what Mom said, Dad, Dad loved his job, um, and he, he didn't shy away from conflict either. Um, and he had a lot of it here. As I know you guys, if you can't stand conflict, this isn't a job to be in for sure. And he, he kind of enjoyed it. He loved this city so much. He talked about this job on many occasions. We would ride back and forth to Georgia Southern Football games. We'd been going to Georgia Southern Football games for 30 years, and, and he would, we'd spend a lot of time talking about planning and zoning stuff on our way back and forth to games. And I kind of, those of you that know anything about Georgia Southern Football know that Erk Russell always called Georgia Southern Stadium the prettiest little stadium in America. And that's kind of what Dad umpired it, the prettiest little town in, in America. And he, he really strived to do that. He loved his job, and he loved all you guys too.
Ms. Pamela? Anybody? James, you're a big mom. Well, again, I want to thank you for sharing your husband, your father, your grandfather with everything that he went through. That's a sacrifice, not only on his part, but y'all's too. But he certainly came through with flying colors, and Perry is going to be better for many, many years to come because of his efforts and because of his leadership and because of the imprint that he has and will continue to have on the citizens and hearts and minds of this community. Again, congratulations and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item four, still recognition presentations for C is the introduction of a new employee. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council, I'd like to introduce to you our new chief building official, Tracy Esther. Uh, Tracy has been here for about two and a half weeks and is still coming, still coming to work even after all the things that were thrown to him. So, um, just wanted to make sure you were aware of him and recognized him, and think he's going to be doing a great job for us, and we've been working with him for a long time.
Mr. Esther, welcome to the team.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
You've joined quite a, quite a team, and there's been a lot of history. Uh, we've got a good reputation in town, uh, sometimes to the point where people don't like dealing with us because we make them follow rules, and you're a big part of that. Thank you for joining us, and we're looking forward to, uh, working with you for many, many years to come. Congratulations, and we welcome you.
Good luck, sir. Just a pleasure being here.
Thank you very much. Item five, for citizens with input. Is anyone present who wishes to address council on any item at this time? Thank you. Item six, as a public hearing, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns, and of course, with OCGA Section 36-678-3C. Item six A is a petition for rezoning, application number R-17-06. The applicant, Hope Seating Air Incorporated, requests rezoning of the property from City of Perry R-2, Two Family Residential District, to City of Perry NMU, Neighborhood Mixed Use District. The property is located at 503 Bradley Street. Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, Mayor. This property, as you mentioned, at Bradley Street is currently zoned residential. The applicant is requesting the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, which is part of the Form Based Code that was, uh, recently applied to the, um, Courtney Hodges Corridor. This property is contiguous to the current property that Mr. Hope owns, that is currently zoned Neighborhood Mixed Use. Um, the, uh, property itself consists of 0.65 acres. It's undeveloped, and as I mentioned, it is contiguous to the current property and operations of Hope Seating Air. Um, it is part of the Sandhill Community, and the applicant intends to use the property for employee parking, supporting an eventual expansion of the existing facility on the joint property. The property is located at the northeast corner of Bradley and Gardner, and at the northwest corner of Bradley and Gene Streets are currently zoned Neighborhood Mixed Use and are developed with commercial uses. Otherwise, the remainder of Bradley Street is residential in character. The Neighborhood Mixed Use District is part of the Form Based Code, um, and there are certain requirements of that code that will apply to this property, including a buffer along the northeast property line, um, and a 10-foot parking landscape, uh, strip along Bradley Boulevard. In reviewing the criteria for, um, evaluating rezoning requests, we believe that the request does comply with those criteria. However, one item that, um, the staff's review, uh, we looked at, uh, the intended use as a parking lot and future additional uses that could apply in the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, um, which are other commercial uses, of course, as well as some residential. Uh, the fact that the property fronts on Bradley Street, um, and residents in the Sandhill Community are more likely to rely on alternative means of transportation than the Perry community in general, we felt it was important to look at, um, uh, safety and preserving opportunities for, uh, pedestrian and bicycle traffic without interference from additional commercial traffic, um, on Bradley Street. So with that, the staff recommended approval of the request with a condition that there be no vehicular access from this property onto Bradley Street. We felt that the access could be through the existing parcel with access onto Gardner. At the public hearing, or excuse me, at the informational hearing that the Planning Commission held, uh, a couple of weeks ago, the applicant explained why that would be an issue for him, and at the public hearing, that's an opportunity for him to do that for you as well. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the, um, of the zoning change, but without the staff recommended condition regarding the vehicular access. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Does any member of council have any questions to Mr. Wood at this time? Thank you, sir. At this time, is there anyone present who wishes to speak for the petition for rezoning application number R-1706, the applicant of Hope Seating Air Inc., as described?
Mayor Bob Lawson here. Thank y'all for here. I'm Hope Seating Air. I've got Hope, Martin, Woody, Greg, and the rest of the hugs. We are asking that the City wants to approve what Mr. Wood just said, and without a condition. Now, I think Hope and Woody can also answer that. This is really just part of the employees. They come to work day, they live by this on inputs, and outflow of traffic all over the day. It's just come hard, go to work, do your business, come back, and go home. I think that alleviated the council's, I mean, the planning commission's concern. Will we start answering any questions?
Thank you, sir. Would you get anyone else present who wishes to speak for this application as described? Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak against the application, the petition for rezoning number R-17-06, the applicant of Hope Seating Air Incorporated, as described? Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Item 9, business, now, head or matters that have been referred from the July 17, 2017 work session held last night, and the July 18, 2017, three council meetings that was held at 5:00 PM today. Ms. Gilmore, is there anything from either of those sessions that need our attention at this time?
No, sir.
Thank you. Item 9B, this is the first reading of an ordinance for the rezoning of property from City of Perry R-2, Two Family Residential District, to City of Perry NMU, Neighborhood Mixed Use District. The property is located at 503 Bradley Street. Council, since this is the first reading and introduction of actions required by you at this time. Item 9C is a presentation relative to playground revitalization program. Mr. Di.
Please, sir. Uh... Mayor and Council, um, if you recall, probably back in January, uh, we had been approached by a volunteer group to look at some of our parks and our infrastructure. Uh, they were asking for, they were wanting to do some cleanup and do some other great projects. And from that came other conversations regarding upgrades and what could be done, and recommendations to, uh, equipment and just, uh, different things to increase the, uh, infrastructure that we already have. From that, uh, Council, Mayor Jones, and Biden Grace and I have met several times to begin pulling in ideas of, you know, what would the upgrades be like if we took in the input from various citizens, different people? I went at it from a standpoint of what are other municipalities doing in Georgia, both locally, regionally, and then, oh, and national? From that, uh, this presentation you're about to see is in regards to our existing playgrounds, not the new facilities that we're talking about going into the future. This is a depiction of what Roger, Calvin, Creekwood, and some of our popular parks could look like if they were to be upgraded at the highest levels. So from there, I'd like to start with Roger Park. Uh, what you see is a photograph of Roger now, and then a playground facility by Sky Builders, which is actually a brand of Little Tikes that is a rendition of a playground in, this was actually in Tennessee, but there is a similar playground in Athens, Georgia that you'll see later in this presentation. What you're looking at is the 45,000 square foot structure with a rubberized concrete flooring, concrete apron around it, making it fully ABA compliant. And the term destination playground is a description of basically a playground where people travel to. Right now, uh, during our research and some of the, uh, social media comments and stuff we've been listening to over the past several months, you have folks that travel right now prepared about Byron Headed Lards Playground that folks, I think it was built eight years ago, uh, reached out to their director, uh, got some information from them, and, you know, these destination playgrounds are facilities that not only your local community uses, but other folks come into visit and see and want to take part in. So, from that design that you saw on the bottom of the Tennessee, uh, we had a vendor from Georgia who had built two of these. They built one in Columbus, Georgia, and they built one in Athens, Georgia. They came down to Roger, uh, met with me, went through some notes and ideas that I gathered from my meetings with, uh, members of council, and put together a rendition voice. You'll notice the theme colored with maroon, green, and gold, with accents of red. The, um, the, the 3D pictures that you work from here, this tallest structure is about 18 feet tall. That's the tallest one. That, that company is the only one who builds facilities that high. Um, if you get a chance, go on the internet and, and check out the, the one in Columbus and Athens, you will be impressed. The price tag there is significant, talking, uh, cost. The way I wrap my mind around the playgrounds these days, if you're going to build a 4500 square foot house, how much would it cost you? That's kind of how it is. So, uh, the next, uh, the next picture you're going to see is a company called Burke, um, another Georgia, uh, vendor, Play South, has built four Burke products. They actually were the group that built one in Byron, and that is the brand that is in the Byron Park. This is their rendition of a 4500 square foot, uh, park entity using their equipment, college games, and, um, uh, service. That is not grass, that is actually concrete with a rubber coating on top of it. Now, with that being said, you can color it out. It can make anything rainbow, that was just a depiction. And the last one for Roger is through Miracle. They're, they're another big vendor in the playground industry, Hasid Recreation, is a Georgia vendor who has built Miracle products all over the state. They are also in the business of working with Vortex and Splash Pack Construction, so I've been working on that project simultaneously while doing this one, and happened to be in Athens, and say, you want to take a drive to? And, uh, they came back with this rendition. Their is not quite as tall as the others, but it's tall enough. Uh, and as you'll see, the, the prices are all, you know, close and approximate, but it gives you a good idea of three different vendors, three different styles, and what the cost associated with these kind of, those costs. Okay? Next one, go to Creekwood Park, and this will be another destination playground. There's already a lot going on in this park. We've got the pending shelter that is newly built. We're talking about Splash Pack beginning as soon as the pool closes this year. And then our playground out there is, eh, you know, it's, it's, it's there, but this will be a different kind of project here. Uh, that is another Sky Builder, um, Little Tikes line, and when you look at the concept they provided with us, this would be what you would look at in that space, um, as a significant upgrade. The next one, Burke, very similar to what the, the, uh, concept for Roger would be. As all of them are, you just have a different square foot to work with, sort of slightly at a smaller scale, not much. You're going from 4500 square feet, probably 42. And then Miracle version is very similar as well. The last park is actually, the major, the last larger park I'd like to look at is Calvin Park. Now, doing research on destination playgrounds, um, one of the things that was a, a common, uh, narrative was multi-generational. And of our three parks, Calvin probably fits that mold of one of the others, because you do have a, only tennis courts that we have that were meaning to upgrade, with some new ones. You've got the archery club, you've got an elementary school very close, you've got a neighborhood or neighborhoods that are multi-generational. You have an older group, with now you have younger groups, and you see a lot of strollers, and you see a lot of all the above going around this activity, which to me is purely multi-generational. Now, that handsome gentleman right there is not my dad, but he could definitely pass for a die. You notice the nice big head and all that good stuff, and the black beard cleared up. But Calvin Park's, uh, proposal that, that I provided, a little bit different in color, a little bit smaller in scale. This is another Sky Builder line. This one is the tall one as well, it would fit in with a theme, so to speak, of what you're seeing, a little bit less of a cost. Burke, same thing, this is their rendition concept of that type of, of, of equipment. If you've ever seen one in Byron, you can recognize their equipment if you're out up there. And then Miracle, um, they're just, they're comparable to the other three as far as size and scale and cost. Okay? Now, that's the three larger parks. While we were looking into this, we wanted to go ahead and look at all, including our five main parks, which are, are going to be shown next. They are Eddie Redlin, Johnny Devil Dixon, Old Phil One, Willie Deontay Williams, and Woodland Parks. Now, they have, uh, they're significantly older. Some are better shaped than others because they're in a shape. Eddie Redlin is, is out the sun the majority of the day, it gets kind of weather beaten, but since we were going about this project, Perry might look all at it in one time and, and see what upgrading would look like for these facilities. And I wanted to be thorough, so I went at it in three different ways, upgrading what's there, upgrading, uh, the existing structure and surface, and then what would the cost of completely replacing them. All five of these are about the same size and have same amenities. So, if we just put the rubberized concrete around the facilities, you're talking $7,000 to the smallest one being in Woodland, $3,700, and that's because it doesn't have a swing set in it. The advantage of the concrete or rubber is maintenance, accessibility, upkeep, no fire ants, no moles, no cracking out, none of that stuff. Uh, you have to pay a little bit for it upfront, but you're talking about something that you don't have anything to wash off, so it's all about here. But I tell you, that kind of will get processed the way it works. And if you want to do it, do it right all the way. The option of taking what we have in place and getting to the face of it, taking the swing sets that are safety compliant, but just have been beat up by the heat and sun over the years. There's a process called electrostatic painting, which is, it's, it's not spray painting with product, so to speak. It is actually a process that if I had the young guys that met with me and went to each facility, we had to explain it a lot better and sound a whole lot smarter. But it's taking, um, an older piece, stripping it down to just bare metal, and then repainting it using electrostatic. And it basically will make it, you know, look brand new. That combined with putting in rubberized surfacing, did that route, you're talking for one of these parts, $16,000. Woodland would be half that because, again, it only has the play future and not swing set. Now, to redo an entire small park, one of the vendors provided an estimate for me, you're talking between $30,000 or $40,000 to make brand new, brand new surface, brand new play. So, I wanted to provide that information and give a grand total of all your, your parks, all together. Now, I want to go back to Roger as an example and Sky Builders with my personal, uh, I had the opportunity, I took a vacation and went back to Tennessee to visit family. Along the way, I knew that the vendor who provided me the Sky Builder models, that's the tallest ones, they had done a project in Athens, so I stopped, I see it, and my daughter stopped to take pictures and play. What you see are the exact models, just their theme and their colors. You see, this park is truly phenomenal when you see it in person. It looks good on pictures, but when you pull it to the parking lot, they've already had to expand the parking lot to accommodate the park. Very nice parking lots, soon as they start up. The, uh, you're going to see next week for me, we're going to talk about, uh, the public arts master plan, and from our public survey, uh, we did complete that plan, one of the areas that folks are probably wanting to see art in is our parks. As soon as I walked in the gates. Now, it's a bulldog, but it's still art. It's a sculpted creature of art, right? Yeah, I can't live without seeing it. Yeah. It's a lot more matching than the turkeys. It's, uh, they, they, they have recently done this and finalized the gravity of what these facilities do for a community and we're saying about it is. I looked up some art for this research, okay, while, while I'm putting this together for you, and I came across... And I came across some things from the Early Childhood Development Center. It's funny that we talked last night about GMA. Both the chief and I attended classes that talked about third, third reading level and also, this is one of those institutions that gives that kind of data to those folks. That playground that I just showed you, out of fifty in the United States, would rank number six. Number thirty-six, number twenty-six, number six. In the entire country? It's two hours away from running. Now, I also wanted to say, okay, guys, what did you do to do this? Six hundred thousand dollars, it's flossing. And when you read this article, they were nervous. This was not something that led aside, hey, let's go do this today. But, you know, when it came to an end and they didn't do it, it, I just can't put into words what you see when you go through and actually see it in person. And me, of course, I'm passionate about it because I'm your park director. I see our parks every day. One of the things that I took away from the title Destination Playground, when you look at this plan and this presentation that I just showed you, it's just concept. It's just an idea of what it could be, okay? But in reality, you know, Perry is growing so fast right now that if this project, something like this was done, Perry would be known as a Destination Playground community. I mean, you know, you're talking, quality of life is one of the things that we take very seriously. And in a statement in my hip hop, completing this presentation was, quality of life is our way of life. That's the kind of statement that you make when you do these kind of projects. And we're already in a place where some of them are getting so old, we won't have to face those anyway, time to time. Some of them are going to have to be changed after they're getting unsafe, the way they're doing their duty, doing their due diligence, so to speak. And so, they're going to be made a change in any way. And I wanted to put together for you, along with my fellow council members who helped me do this, what would it look like? And this is what that looks like. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to thank you for the presentation.
I'm trying so, we'll get you back, ma'am. I appreciate that.
And I'd just like to say that I'm very excited about the possibility of doing this. Our community is growing, has a lot of young families, so have young children, even if the mayor does scare them from time to time. But this is, you know, and they need as quality of place to play as possible. And so, I'm very excited just about the possibility of this. And I would add also, it was absolute privilege to work with my fellow council member, Miss Bynum Grace on this. She works very hard for her constituents, and it was a joy to see that more firsthand in action. And I have to say that because she has her biggest dream on time. If I don't say it, I'm going to get hurt. No, in all seriousness, it is true. I just wanted to voice my excitement for the possibility of this project.
I too am very excited about this project and rolling it out for folks in the neighborhoods. Next Tuesday at the town hall meeting will give them a better understanding of what, you know, what we think Perry can look like and the stimulation we think that this program can do for our children along with Splash Pack. And I'm just looking forward to all of this coming to reality.
Is it possible that we can get some tennis courts in the meantime?
Sorry?
Tennis courts. Tennis courts?
Tennis courts.
We don't have any, I think, we have one?
We're actually, that was part of the presentation, we're adding two more tennis courts to the community as we're explaining to our now.
Maybe some tables and some chairs on the new structure on Creewood. Can we get that down?
Go ahead.
Stella.
We have...
If you would please rise and tell us your name and address.
I'm Stella Howard.
Go ahead.
I would like to see some tennis courts. Got to dug up two. And the new structure, y'all be up on Creewood, no tables and no chairs. Just can't use it.
We have tables and chairs, but it's when you rent them.
At the right though?
Yes, when you rent the facility, there's tables, there's new tables and chairs in there.
Now, we have that structure for the rent purposes?
Yes, ma'am.
Used to build a structure over there, and when we leave the pool, we would go on each nights and sit, eat like us or whatever, but we can't do that now. The taxpayers pay for the building, and it can't be used unless somebody rented?
No, it's open, what I'm saying is we have tables and chairs inside of the container. When you rent, we have picnic tables out around the facility as well.
If it right, well, you sitting up under the tree, y'all would be at the structure and no tables and no chairs, that don't make no sense. And the structure just gather and rent? And the taxpayers don't bill the bills? We still got to spend money? There ought to be some tables and chairs on one of the structures though. When we come out to the pool, we go there and just sit and eat or whatever.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Part of the long range plan that we have for the improvements to Creewood Park include tables and chairs.
Yeah, I was just asking, but...
Well, specifically for what he's talking about, that they're available for use when someone wants to utilize that particular structure. I understand what you're saying. You want something there permanently, but that is in the plans.
Okay.
That is in the plans. I know they're not out there right now, that's a manager that rents the facility, but we do have that on the drawing board.
Okay, he didn't say that.
I know. I'm stating it for him. Anything, Bro?
Yes.
Counsel.
And maybe y'all can get some ping pong tables or some kind of game so the kids, we can use the structure and play up on there? Maybe y'all can add on to the structure so you can store the ping pong tables at night and stuff?
We order the store at night.
If you build a part of what was on the old one, where it opened up, you could lock the door, put them in, lock on it?
That's a very good suggestion, but I repeat historically that that's difficult to control without having someone from Parks and Recreation on the site during the entire day.
So, when they come to work, they can just open it up, and when they, at night, they can just lock it up?
I understand. We'll take that under advisement, but I doubt that will happen because things tend to walk away. That's the reality of what we're talking about, without somebody there. And that will happen anywhere in town, from that standpoint. We don't have any other facility that I'm aware of where that happens. Now, we'd be glad to make a provision for that if that's something that the neighborhood wants.
It would be nice for the neighborhood to have.
Okay.
You know, just for the kids to do. And it's way, nobody ever go up on the structure, does nothing there.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else, Mr. Guy?
You know, I know what the young lady's talking about, is that we're having a town hall meeting on twenty-fifth, and that might be some suggestions that you want to bring up at that meeting and get some things that can get implemented. Just like the man was saying, one of the things that we found out in the past, a lot of times, we've got facilities out there, and just like he said, and you notice yourself that if you let it stay for a period of time, stuff start happening to it. It get broke or people tatted up, you know what I mean? I said, that's the point. So, we don't have anybody, we can still be there and watch everybody. So, we don't need to be watching adults do things. And you already know, just like I know, that things get torn and things get broke. And then when we come back and find out that they tore up and they broke, nobody knows, nobody going to tell who's there. But then, we got to replace them or go back and do something about it, you know what I mean? But come to the town hall meeting and voice your opinion, and say what you need to say, and we'll take that into consideration and see what we can do.
Okay. Next up question, what is the town hall meeting?
It's Tuesday, the twenty-fifth of July at five-thirty at Creewood Park.
We have rojers in every church. We're passing out this week. We'll get them in the church.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. I have a nine D, a resolution for consideration and the options. I have a ninety-one. Counsel, this is a resolution amending the city of Perry Personnel Management System. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, in your package, you have a copy of a resolution with proposals to amend the city's personnel management system by doing two things. The first is to extend the probationary period for a new employee from one hundred and eighty days to three hundred and sixty-five days. Many of the departments already have that, for example, police and fire. And the administration recommends to you that we be consistent in having that year-long period. It does not have any effect on benefits or anything like that, it's just a probationary period. The second item we're requesting that you consider, and this would be, as we talked about in pre-council, subject to review by the city attorney, is our personnel system currently says that an employee cannot take over any more than a certain number of hours of annual leave each year. So, the longer employee works for the city, that sometimes can be difficult making that transition over. So, we are recommending to you all that you authorize that while the employee works for the city, that they can carry over their annual leave and there would not be any imposed cap. There would be a cap should the employee elect to leave the city employment, and that would remain the same as the current cap that we have right now. In other words, you're consistent if you were leaving now as an employee compared to after making the modification. Third item, that's listed actually, second part of, second, another part of, second item, is that we currently have a provision there that says if an employee does not provide notification on leaving, which is called abandonment of a position, that they forfeit the loss. In other words, they can't take any annual leave with them. I don't believe we can sustain that legally, so we recommend you take that note because there can be a number of circumstances on why an employee is not able to continue or give notice. And with that, we recommend, again, subject to the city attorney's review, that you approve the amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Any member of council having questions regarding this amendment to the city of Perry Personnel Management System as described? If you have any questions, at this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution that amends the city of Perry Personnel Management System as described.
Second.
Subject to the city attorney's review and approval. And, sir, thank you. All good.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing and all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries on. Thank you. I have a nine D two. This is a resolution amending the city of Perry fee schedule. Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the standard practice with the city is to make adjustments in its fee schedule once it has adopted the operating budget, which you have done. The resolution you have in your packet does it. Generally, it is a two and a half percent increase in the city's fees and charges, which ties back to general cost of living. However, I do want to point out, as you stated in the budget, is that the fire fee remains the same, there will be no change on that. The sanitation charge for the regular residential toters, there remains the same, there's no change on that. The other fees generally do make an increase. As we talked about in pre-council, there are two modifications we'd like to recommend to you based on the document that you have. The first one, you may remember yesterday that you had talked about the solicitor process that's in the city and the licensing and the tag and the badge that they have to get. We'd like to recommend that the, based on information from the police department, that badge cost for the solicitor would be changed to ten dollars each. The other item we'd like to recommend to change is that based on a multi-year review of the fees that we charge for developments coming in, that we do a fifty percent reduction in that charge, which will still cover the costs that we have to pay. And it's always been the position of council, that the fees and charges should be tied to what the actual costs are.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Does any member of council have any questions, thoughts, or concerns regarding the proposed amendment that will amend the city of Perry fee schedule as described and also modified by the changes that he has specified? Hearing any questions? At this time, I will entertain a motion that we adopt the resolution that will amend the city of Perry fee schedule as described and modified based on the items that you were throwing up.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing and all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries on. Thank you. I have a nine E is the award bid. Ninety-one is bid number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six, the Tucker Road, Wall Street Emergency Sewer Rehab Project, Mr. McBrady.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We have received bids for the Wall Street, Tucker Road Emergency Rehab Project. Our low bidder was received by, it was Renee Group Incorporated. The Renee Group has been reviewed by staff and consulting engineers. We have found no issues to Renee Group's performance. So, city staff recommends award of this bid of eighty-six thousand four hundred and eight dollars.
Thank you, Mr. McBrady. Does any member of staff have any questions to Mr. McBrady concerning this bid at this time? Thank you, sir. Counsel, we have heard the recommendation from staff and administration. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the low bidder for the Tucker Road, Wall Street Emergency Sewer Rehab Project to the amount of eighty-six thousand four hundred and eight dollars to the Renee Group Incorporated out of Atlanta. Is a motion or a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing and all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries on. Thank you. I have a nine F. This is a special events application request from the Perry Main Street Promotion Committee. Chief Lynn, if you'll talk about the whole thing, please, sir.
Yes, sir, be happy to. Mayor and council, this is a joint venture between the Main Street Promotion Committee and the Georgia National Playground, in particular, the National Barrel Horse Association Junior Competition that will be in town. This is for this coming Sunday to show a movie on the grounds of the old courthouse downtown. All the paperwork's in order. I'll sign off on, you know, from the police department's perspective, the, there will be some snacks available as well as beer vendor on site to show in the movie Fantastic Deeks, The Bird Find Them. And it calls for closure of three streets, Carroll Ball and Germantown, as they border the courthouse. This is a configuration of streets that we've closed many times, this being Sunday evening. Street closure will be at six-thirty PM, the movie later on after it's scattered, and there are no businesses impacted because we're not open in that area at that time.
Thank you, chief. Does any member of council have any questions regarding this application or the street closures? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Counsel, we have heard the details of the special events application request from the Perry Main Street Promotion Committee in conjunction with the Agro Center of having a movie night this coming Sunday evening with some street closures. At this time, I will entertain a motion that we approve the special events application request with the street closures involved as described. Is a motion or a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing and all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries on. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore. Is there anything further in the business that needs our attention at this time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Out of attendance, the department of items, to start with, Department of Economic Development, Mr. Smith.
Mayor, Mayor and council, going back on the previous side of discussions, the downtown movie night, I think it is important to reiterate that this is a community event. It is open to everyone. It's a free event. Excuse me, Mr. Smith. The, the tent starts around seven-thirty. The movies start around eight-thirty, around dusk. We'll have vendors there, cool ice, we have show notes, Cox catering. We do popcorn, and we'll have just have a, we're rocking serve a beer. You can bring chairs, bring plenty's. Should be a wonderful event. Again, all the welcome is free. Should be a great community event.
Please leave an ass at home. You're having a... That's all. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Under the Department of Leisure Services, Mr. Guy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. If anybody gets a chance and you're on social media, go to the city's Facebook page. We had our annual football kickoff for our little ones that are going to the program. Some really good pictures. If you got loved ones in there, you might see some cool action shots and some of the coaches that have been doing this with us for a long, long time. Last but not least, this is the last week for registration for football, soccer, and cheerleading. If you do register this week, there is a late fee, but we will be finishing up on Friday. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Under the Department of Community Development, Mr. Wood. Thank you. From Perry Fire and Emergency Services, the battalion chief, Rowell. Thank you. From Department of Ant and Administration, Mr. King. Thank you. From the Police Department, Chief Lynn. Thank you. From... From the Department of Public Works.
Captain.
Thank you, sir. Out of eleven councilmember items, I'll start with Mr. King.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Walker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Simon Brice.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Holber.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Out of twelve for General Public, says a running member of the General Public wishes to address council on any matter of the time. Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
I'm Amy Dixon. I am, my dad, we lived here in Perry in 94, my dad came, he's more tall, he became the head coach at Perry High School. And then we literally just, he found jobs around this area for us to stay in Perry because we love it so much. I went off to school with AVAC, had a fun time, I'd come home, but I'm, I'm, me and my husband, my husband's from Heather County, he even moved to Perry because we love Perry. We love the football, basketball program, the rec department. A few issues that we do have is my sister played softball, my best friend was in Athens. And when my son was younger, I would literally pack up to go not only visit them, but so that we could play at parks, playgrounds that were useful and that were, you know, that we would want to get around. We had Byron Open, we had Byron for Byron stuff, and if we don't pack lunch, we eat at the Byron restaurants. You know, and I think that having playgrounds here, a lot of us, like me, have maybe just stayed here where our parents were born and everybody's around, we're just typically what happens, or, you know, come back home because we want to be here. But we want to be able to raise our families with our children, you know, a community that has something for us to do. So I'm really, I'm a Facebook group, by the way, I wanted to put it all on Facebook and there's a bunch of people behind me pushing it. And one of the main things is, like in Creekwood, we go over there and watch football games and in between games, we watch all of our kids, like everybody, I've got first kids that live in Creekwood, that live over our Roger Park, that live over, when immigrants are here, we're all together. And as a community, that's what we like to do, but when our kids are running around playing, there's no playground for us to go get on while we're in the swing games at all in Creekwood, so if we want to pack up for picnic day to go to Roger, those aren't even where it's high to go to. I'd rather drive, like I'd even drive now to make the counties and splash pad over there, that's a 45 minute drive, to go there, charge $2, $5 a park, $2 to get in, and we stay all day. And, I mean, you know, I'm, so I'm getting, I need to stop, I stop at their dollar general, I stop at their gas station, and perhaps up here, it's more money coming here, because people are getting out of their house to do stuff. But one of the big things is, like at Creekwood and at Roger Park, the kids, one of the big things that our community does is play basketball. They drop their kids off, their kids might walk to the park. So one of the big things to do, not only having more tennis courts, but having basketball courts that are useful for them to use, having, you know, more facilities for the kids to do more exercise. I mean, we were in our backyard yesterday doing exercise because I feel like there's not a playground for us to go run around at, that's for my kids, which is from age two to 11, which all of, everything that Mr. Dye showed would benefit from that. So I'm just really pleading with y'all to, I know, looking at the money, I'm going, you know, it's hitting me, I just bought a new house, I'm like, oh, it's not like somewhere to live, but it's, I mean, you have a young community, everybody has kids, and I know, I mean, the whole works, I mean, all of it, they have a bunch of children. Sorry. I'm just sharing all of them. I'm just, you know, like, just like him, and I'm like, like me, all my colleagues, I'm calling, a lot of them here in Perry, we all have a bunch of children, and I just am pleading with y'all, give us something for our kids to go to, so that we can go as a community and it makes the community better. I can show up and, like she has children, we have children together, and it just brings the community together, not just with her, but with other people. I'm just pleading with y'all to give the kids something to do, I'm waiting for gas. Another places. And another thing I would like to address with Mr. Dye is, my husband coaches, I'm Rose Dixon, he coaches at the rec department, and we coached there for a long time. I mean, my dad's a coach, that's who I am. One of the main things I would like for you to see in Perry rec is rules are rules, and I mean, I heard you say earlier, like you can follow, you get the rules and you just follow them. I would, I would really not only appreciate, but like to see a set of rules, being in as a coach, as a parent, as a player, put a set in that everybody has to follow. With a lot of, let this person do this, and then turn to let this person do this. And right now, honestly, we're in the middle of not just taking my coach and going to coach somewhere else, but taking a lot of the players to play somewhere else. So it's a big deal with, you know, there's a lot AAU and triathlon coming up, and, but we don't want to do that, we want to keep it in Perry. But I just like, make the rules and make every single, I don't care if they coach there, but they don't have kids that play there, and they, you know, the rules, make the rules the rules. I mean, you know what happened last year, I communicated with you about that, and that's the big, I mean, my brother's playing there, you know, my mom's playing there, and it's a big deal, so, I mean, that's what we strive. We want people to see that, I know they put it very high, they follow the football team, but we want to show them what our young athletes have, and I would like to compete with one of our others and show them that just because I'm right, you know, spread out, what's going to be going on in the world? And we can do this, but we just, I want people to bring us back here, because a lot of people want to leave because of that. So, okay, I'm gonna talk.
You're wanting to see some of that is already starting and the structure, as we go, it is going to be rigorous, but we'll be some upset folks.
And that's fine.
That's what it's gonna be.
That's fine.
We are getting things more in line with policy. Now, the new part will be enforcing this year, we're gonna see that, so. What I'm saying, but...
Good. Thank you. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Would anyone else want to address council?
I would just like to say this to help her out.
And your name, sir.
Jonathan Johnson. I just wanted to know that, any more, I know, any more of Rocky's, they're building a parade gym and a splash pad, not the Lawrence Tower, so we should be out for six months and you can just bring that one, you know, about.
We got it here.
Ours is gonna be...
I mean, that's good, and I like it then. And that's one of the things, like, like, so I have a lot of friends that are single moms or single dads that live in some of these places, the half-parks, and if their kids can, you know, go to the splash pad and not worry about the child around anymore. And there's people on the other side that are upset the pools being taken away, but yes, pools are big, I mean, but you know, like, there's a big upkeep with pools and if you're, and if you can't swim, it's scary to have children in pools. But the splash pad, I mean, it, as long as it's, like I said, but like he was saying, with all ages, you can make it for all ages. I mean, you can make it, I, I like running through them, so, and, you know, just safe for the kids actually run through and play, okay.
Thank you.
Don't go accept them, so.
Not yet. Would anyone else like to address council?
I would.
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
My name is Mary Simon, and I would just like to say that I am so thankful for the improvement that's come to Creekwood, and I am one of that, I would like to see the pools stay open because, as you said, our kids don't really have anywhere to do anything to do, and we do have a lot of kids still attending the pool that's over there now. I hear about the splash pads and there's somewhere else, but we want to look at what's good for that little area back there because we have a lot of kids that come. So if at all possible that the pool would stay open, we're hoping that it could. And as you mentioned about the shed, I'm happy to hear that it's something that's going to be added to shed because I first, when I first saw it, I was saying, what's the purpose of just putting this shed, there's nothing that's there with it, because the old building, it did, it had a kitchen, it had chairs on the side where people could sit down. And so I understand what she said as well, we have a shed that we're gonna have to rent out, and I understand I'm bringing money to the city, that's good, but I would like to see something that's added to shed. And for the new equipment that is coming, I would just like to say that we would do our utmost, my husband and I and other residents that are there, to do whatever we could to help keep it up, if we need to be washed off or whatever, we already are, but we just like to know that whatever improvements that are coming, we are grateful for that. And then I would like add as well, on the softball area, the little restroom that's there, if it could be modernized, I mean, it looked like a little country house, see, I didn't even know it was a restroom. I said, we, when we play softball, I said, we don't have a restroom, so we just kind of go, they say, oh, that's the restroom right there. So no signs, none whatsoever, but if it could just be, you know, faceless, we would be grateful, appreciate it, and we would have to make certain that it just kept up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Would anyone else want to address council?
I'm sorry, I have one thing.
Briefly.
Yes. When we did playground equipment, can you think of one thing, like, closed areas where you can't see inside or not really good? You know, I mean, you know what I mean, like, just safety as far as like, because there are people that don't like our children to be safe. So just like, if you, what you're thinking about, and I didn't notice anything there, but just, because I've seen some that have like closed areas where the kids can run through and just, you never know what could be waiting or even at night when people aren't, the kids aren't there, so it's just something that's safety.
The, the, the more modern designs are open for that area.
I know, yeah, okay.
Yes. Would I like to remind you of some events that are coming up? First and foremost, this is the Town Hall meeting that is already mentioned, there will be a week from tonight, July the 25th at 5:30 at Creekwood Park. I would encourage everyone to be present, we will hear a lot more about what the plans are for that particular park, and we would want to have you to take any suggestions that you might have for improvements there. I understand that Tuesday, the 26th, at 10:30, I do business in town, Tractor Supply is having grand opening. You may remember that Houghton County is home to the southeastern Little Lee Fields, and they host the southeastern regional tournaments every year for boys softball and the girls, excuse me, the boys' baseball and the girls' softball. That's coming up. We just have it on calendars, if you, if you're good, sporting events by our young people. Our next regularly scheduled meeting, we are having a planned on August the 7th of work session at 5:00 PM. That's on for July 31st. We will be in the next work session at 5:00 PM. That's the Monday, and Tuesday, August 1st, we'll be at the pre-council council meeting. Just don't forget about the movie night, this coming Sunday night on Old Courthouse Long and Downtown Perry. That'll be passed by the town office, stay away if you haven't seen the movie. And if there's nothing else to know of course, thank you for your interest and participation. Stand clear.